We'll call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of April 2nd. We'll note that all commissioners are here. And the first item of business then is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
Well, second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 The opposed say nay. Motion carries. Second item we have is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to Tab 4. And the first item we have there is a proclamation. And this is the Extra Mile America Foundation proclamation, which I'll read. Whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile American Foundation to create 100 extra mile cities and states in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2012. Now therefore, I, Dennis W. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2012 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in our community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Are there any objections by my fellow commissioners to me signing this proclamation? Hearing none, then I'm pleased to sign it. And we'll pass it on to Mr. Kessel, and he can attest to my signature. And we certainly encourage our citizens to volunteer within the community here in going an extra mile to make Dickinson an even better community. The next item we have is Item B. And this is the 2012 Southwest Regional Grant Awards. And I think, Mr. Kessel, you're presenting those.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner. I'm pleased again tonight to inform you of the grant awards that are slated before you. This group or committee that makes these assignments is Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Steiner, and myself. We had several requests for funding. I'm happy to say that we were able to fund almost all requests. We have grants totaling over $20,000 to approximately 10 or so different entities, including cities like Bellfield, Gova, Halliday, Hebron, New England, Reader, Regent, Centennial Butte, and Taylor. You have the exact amounts and the requests in front of you, and this committee would recommend that you approve the grant awards as presented.
Mr. Kessel, these monies come from our sales tax, is that correct?
That's correct, President Johnson. We do use, we allocate about 1% of the sales tax collections to go to grant awards. Right after this one, we'll have another grant award that uses the same source of revenue, sales tax revenue.
And is this a report, or do we have to approve these?
In years past, you have taken a motion to approve these recommendations.
Okay. Would there be such a motion?
No.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? I guess I would just comment, too. I think the city started doing this several years ago in recognition that Dickinson is a regional retail hub and that many of our, or some of our retail sales certainly come from outside the city, from our smaller communities. And this is a way of sharing some of their revenue with them. So, it's a good program. We have the motion, the second. Any other comments? We'll vote, then. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. Item C is similar. These are senior citizen grant awards. Mr. Kessel.
Correct. Excuse me, President Johnson. These are very similar programs. Sales tax collections are used as the funding mechanism for these grant awards. We have several additional communities represented in this group. And this award amount is $26,250. And in fact, we had some dollars that could have went, could have been allocated, but we didn't have granters to award them to. And so what the group decided to request is that we have a second grant award round. And our goal is to make senior citizen centers usable to sustain them long-term. And one way to do that is provide a service, a meal service. Some do that already, but not all. And what we're hoping is to use the dollars, it amounts to about $25,000 that could yet be awarded, do a second grant award, and to have any senior citizen center site that's not a meal center submit a second grant where we could help pay to make that meal site more available. And would include paying for a fridge, a stove, utili, or, excuse me, plates, things of that nature, things that just make it easier to provide that level of service. It can be expensive to get into originally, and we'd like to lower that barrier to entry and make sure that these senior citizen centers are used to their utmost capabilities. So you have before you the initial requests. I'm happy to say that everybody who made a request got funded. In fact, we did fund a few at a higher level than they actually requested. And that left monies left over for this second grant award that I'm requesting that you approve this evening. We do have a committee that puts these together. It does have representation from Elder Care, which oftentimes provides those meal services, and other senior representatives. And this is the recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel? Would there be a motion to approve this, these grant awards? Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It takes us to Item D, city land bid process. I think we discussed this at our previous meeting. Mr. Coling, are you making this presentation?
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners. The document in front of you is a revised bid process for some city-owned land on the southwest of current city limits. This document provides that prospective bidders on the land would be required to provide some additional information regarding their bid, specifically how they would intend to develop the land, master plans, proposed zoning, and those sorts of information items. The agreement or the bid document also provides that any prospective bidder would be required to enter into a development agreement with the city in order to give some assurance to the city of how the project is going to be developed and some assurance that required infrastructure would be developed in that area. Now, the, there is at your table some, or a proposed motion regarding this item. Under state law, municipalities and local government entities are generally required to sell and dispose of city property on a cash basis only. You are incorporating some other requirements into this particular sale, and your home rule charter does allow you the flexibility to do that. But the motion in front of you incorporates some of our city code language regarding waiver of state bidding requirements. And if you do choose to approve this bid document, it'd be my recommendation that you use the proposed motion that is in front of you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Mr. Kessel, do you have any comments?
We've had several interested parties, and I've gone through the changes that Attorney Coling has made. I certainly agree with those changes. I like the fact that the developer agreement is going to be used so that it does bind the potential buyer to the master plan process and to the things that would make this award viable for us. I mean, we're choosing to make an award that may not be based on strictly dollars. So, I like the use of a development agreement to bind that purchaser.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions by city commissioners? We had quite a discussion at the previous meeting regarding this process. I think Mr. Coling reflected a good portion of that discussion, this agreement. Anybody have anything they'd like to question Mr. Coling about or comment on?
Mr. President, I suppose if a successful proposer consummated the agreement with the city and two weeks later sold the land to another developer, he'd still be bound by everything that the proposer was bound by.
Mr. Jackson, that is correct. The agreement would be recorded against the property and intended to run with the land.
Other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Coling provided us with a recommended motion. If you're in favor of this process, if there are no other comments or questions, the chair would entertain a motion right now.
Mr. President, I'll move that the city commission find that the proposed bid process is in the best interest of the city of Dickinson, that any purchase and sale requirements under state law or local ordinance be waived, and that the proposed bid process be approved.
Second. We have the motion, the second. Any discussion, though? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to Item E, the Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Kessel, are you presenting that?
President Johnson, I see that Assessor Hirschfeld made the meeting, and I'd yield the floor to him to make the request.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. The Assessing Department is asking to move the Board of Equalization meeting from the second Tuesday, which is in statute, to the Monday, May 7th. We want to do that due to the number of increases that went out to make certain that all the homeowners who have concerns about that increase have a chance to come in and visit with us and understand why that increase was what it, what we sent out.
Have you been getting requests for meetings now?
Yes, sir. The notices went out over the weekend. I think I know fewer than seven or eight people stopped by my office and probably fielded about that many calls and have one scheduled appointment already to go out and look at their property, make sure that we have it on the rolls correctly.
Since we, that's a city commission day, and we start our city commissions at 4:30, do you believe a half hour is sufficient time to conduct that meeting?
I believe the last two years it's taken about an hour, if I remember correctly. So, if we wanted to be done by 4:30, we may need to bump it up just a touch to 3:30 if that suits everybody.
I think you run the risk of, you know, we push the city commission meeting back then, and if we have timetables, it's going to, I don't know if I could handle all that, so.
Well, that's your pleasure. If you'd like to go at 3:30, I'd sure entertain that.
Would 3:30? Three? You want to start at 3:00?
Yes.
Just to be safe?
Yes.
3:00? All right.
Very good.
3:00.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, we would need a motion, then, to grant the assessor's request to move the meeting to May 7th with a 3:00 PM start time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. All right. We'll go to city administrators' report.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. Tonight, I just have a few items for you. The first is a support letter requested by Elder Care for public transit services. That letter has been enclosed in your report. They have requested a slight revision to that to include some of the in-kind support that the city of Dickinson provides, such as occupying a building that the city owns rent-free. We do provide some utilities, some snow removal. We will put numbers to that and revise the report that, or the letter that you see before you this evening, and then provide that to the North Dakota Department of Transportation. No motions required on that, just for your information. The next item is an agreement for streetscaping improvements. This is regarding the Elks Building. When the city first put this project together several years ago, it allocated dollars to actually demolish the building. Then the developer came in, and some of those dollars were used to, on the building itself, and some were reserved for doing streetscaping surrounding it, things such as new sidewalks, maybe to replicate what was done across the street at American Bank Center, some maybe new street trees, things of that nature. Due to the, due to the delays in the development and such, rather than simply provide that developer with the remaining funds to do that streetscaping, we thought it's in our best interest to have an agreement to supervise the flow of those dollars. And rather than, what you see before you reflects, then, our thought process regarding how we think it should happen. And the first is that the plans for that streetscaping need to be approved by Engineer Soren, and that we would reimburse costs. So, in other words, the developer incurs the costs, provides us with receipts for those costs, and then we reimburse them up to an amount of $82,500. If the streetscaping expenses go beyond that expense, the city is not on the hook for those expenses. It would be on the developer. So essentially, if you agree, we'd be providing $82,500 for streetscaping surrounding the Elks Building proper to be used for things such as renovating the sidewalk, street trees, and that. So, it's as a report. We'd like you to review the agreement, and at next commission meeting, if you see fit, we could approve it at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any reaction to this proposed agreement? I would assume, then, by the silence, is that they support the agreement.
Okay.
These are dollars, I think, that we were scheduled to spend three years ago or four years, something like that, as I recall.
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, it dates back even beyond that. It goes back to the mid-2000s.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Jackson, as I recall, before any developers or development proposals came into being, one year we budgeted $150,000 for demolition costs. And then once we decided that the building wasn't going to be demolished, we said we would still spend $150,000 on it. And I don't recall if, right from the very start, we were thinking about the exterior. I think we were, but I can't recall for certain. But I know the lighting, the sidewalks, some trees, things of that nature, so that, again, it would match up with any other restoration projects in that neighborhood.
President Johnson and Commission, the dollars that are included in this, the $82.5 represents that investment that the mayor just mentioned, but also interest that's accumulated since that time period. So, there's actually some dollars that go beyond an initial allocation.
I think the other dollars, as I recall, might have gone towards the roof. And possibly, when the building was cleaned up with hazardous materials, we probably had to do a match there with, for that Brownfield grant. Again, I don't recall for certain, but I know some of the monies got allocated to items like that, and this is what's left of that original $150,000.
You have an excellent memory. That's exactly what they went. We had a Brownsfield match, and they went to the roof and then cleanup.
What's your name?
(laughing).
Oh.
Mr. President, just to, it does here, basically does put June 30th, 2012. If it's not done by then, we can't use it for other projects downtown.
That's correct.
I think it's time that a line in the sand has been drawn on this, and I would agree with the, with the proposal.
Commissioner Steiner, that's consistent with what Mr. Brinkman has told us. He still contends he'll be done with that building by June of this year.
I have my doubts. But, anyway.
I guess we'll find out if your crystal ball is as clear as your memory.
Yeah, right. Okay. Any other comments here? All right. So, we'll see that likely next meeting's agenda.
Yep.
Okay. What else do you have?
Oh, sorry.
It's still your turn.
The next item is the Risk Management Program. The Fire Department staff generally puts together the safety program. This includes some incidents and such. Farci Sivak, are you interested in presenting, or would you like me to continue? Okay, I'll continue. We did have 12 incidents reported. This excludes property damage reports. Two of them included required medical attention. Just like to point out, one in particular, actually, we've had two that I'm aware of in our solid waste department. As they're bailing the materials that have been accepted into the solid waste stream, we had one injury occur because someone threw a lithium battery away, and in the process of being bailed, it exploded. And fortunately, our staff was wearing safety glasses, but they still obtained injuries. So, it's, I just hope that the public is very cognizant of what they throw in that trash is still handled by people, and to be very cautious about what they do throw, because it does cause injuries to our staff on occasion.
What would have been the proper way to dispose of that battery?
Any batteries you can bring out to the solid, the Baylor Building, and we'll accept those. We'd much rather accept them private, or separated from whatever entity, or any product that they're in. Just don't throw them near your trash bin. We did have two property damage claims, and as you can see, those medical attentions, two of them were in our solid waste department. Eight incidences were in the police department without medical, and one property damage also in the police department, and one in our water utilities. We've also included the injury types. Thankfully, they're all fairly minor in nature, and that the staff will recover. But we are very cognizant of safety, and I'm glad to say that none of these were of a variety that can't be healed. The next item, then, is paperless agendas. And you may have seen Public Works Director Soren and Planner Corton, and then myself, were using a tablet this evening. They've been using it for a couple meetings already. What we'd like to do is move to a paperless agenda where you can receive all of your agenda and supporting materials on your, on a tablet that we will issue you. You then can, we'll send you an email. You can download all of the materials or obtain it off of the city's website. We intend to put all the information on the website so that actually it'll be accessible to any resident who'd like to see it as well prior to the commission meetings, at the same time you're getting this information. We'd like to do a training session at the next commission meeting and start an hour early. And IT manager, Aaron Meyer, would be providing that training. He's good at what he does, and so I'm sure that you'll pick up quickly. We would certainly do a couple meetings of a paperless agenda and one that would include a paper copy until the transition can be accomplished well. We're excited about it. And maybe Engineer Soren, if you'd like to make, you've been doing it probably the longest. Do you have any comments about the process?
Well, the overall process works very well. He's got it very user-friendly. It seems to be easy to go between the items from the agenda to the documents, and it allows for maybe more of the information to be presented in maps that are easily, are much easier to review and see as we're moving forward with this. So, it's been a great addition for us as we've worked with these and tried to even get to planning and zoning and some of those being on these as well for us.
The school board has been on paperless agendas for, I believe, eight years or more. And they, I did talk to some of their staff and elected officials, and they really like the process. So, I think it is certainly, more and more entities are moving to it. And I know there may be some initial hesitation, but like I said, IT manager Meyer will help you along. And then the last item that I have, I see we're approaching 5:00, is planning and zoning stipend. As some of you are acutely aware, Commissioner Jackson specifically, the planning and zoning meetings, the last couple have gone in excess of six hours long. This next meeting doesn't appear that it'll be any less in time. I did have a conversation with President Johnson and a few others. This is certainly a burden on those members. We really appreciate the input that they provide, but we also recognize that they're away from their business, their work, or from private time. And maybe it's time to compensate them a little higher for their time. In 2009, we did increase the stipend they received from $20 a meeting to $30 a meeting. It's not a lot, but it was an increase. I am, you know, any suggestions you may have would certainly be welcomed. I did put a suggestion in the memo that would be adding another $30 if the meeting goes over three hours. Our city commission meetings tend to be between two and three hours long. This would allow us to, you know, keep a stipend for shorter meetings, but then recognize the longer meetings and double the stipend. So, it's just a suggestion, and we're certainly open to any that you may have, but we recognize that the amount of time that they give is become extraordinary of late. So, we don't anticipate a slowdown in that agenda anytime soon.
I would think an increase is merited, and I would keep it simple and just go to a specified number of dollars per meeting, but, for example, I don't think $50 a meeting would be out of line at all, and is probably still too little, but would be an increase over what they now have. But...
I would agree. I mean, their service is more valuable than anything that we could pay them. I mean, their service is more valuable than anything that we could pay them. Granted, they're, we just sort of, tradition read tonight about volunteerism and so on, and they're doing above and beyond what we're asking them to. And I think any form of compensation, more than what we can give them, or what we have been, would be beneficial to them. Sure they'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Jackson, I assume there is some prep time, too. It's not just time at the meeting, but there's a number of items I'm sure you have to read through, and maybe even go to the sites and look at. Can you comment on that?
Well, I think most planning and zoning members probably are doing a lot of prep. You know, to really be informed, you pretty much have to. We've also been doing two meetings a month. Now, I don't know, Mr. Kessel, if you're thinking about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The last few, several months, been doing two meetings a month as well. I have heard comments from a couple of planning and zoning members that these lengthy meetings are causing hardship for them, business-wise. But...
Well, it's extremely important and valuable to our community right now that we have, you know, qualified and dedicated people on planning and zoning. I mean, with everything that's going on, there's a huge burden on them to, you know, try to do this in a very constructive way. And, you know, 15, 20 years from now, we'll, you know, we'll knows the community how well we've done with this expansion, and I would say, to date, we've done very well, and a lot of that's because of the efforts of what planning and zoning do. So I think an increase certainly merited.
Okay.
They're putting in lots of time.
I certainly concur with all of your comments. We did provide them a meal at their last meeting, just to try to make them efficient. But certainly, a stipend increase, I believe, is merited.
Well, we're kind of hungry.
There's water and coffee on your desk.
Okay, well, I, does anybody object, too? Why don't you bring a more detailed recommendation then back for our next meeting? It's 5:00, and we have a number of timetable items, and the first one is to hear from Elder Care. Colleen Radikowski's here, and she has a year-end report to present, so welcome.
Thank you. Well, good evening. My name's Colleen Radikowski. I'm the director of public transit. Elder Care operates the public transit for the community. I did hand out last week in your pamphlets, my PowerPoint presentation, so you'd have an opportunity to take a look at it. And before I begin, I would like to introduce two staff who are here with me. Douglas Walker is to my right, far right here. Doug Walker works part-time for us in public transit on special projects, and also Coley Husky. And Coley is our program manager for the nutrition program, and she also assists with special projects in the office with public transit. I brought them along in case I don't know anything. I can refer to them up here. Okay, we're going to begin. First of all, you know, transportation overall is really important to every individual in our community. It's especially as we continue to grow. I'm going to be taking on an increasing role. Public transportation is essential for overall our well-being in our community. It's crucial to demographics, demographics, as such as our elderly, disabled, and socio-economically challenged. It's really important for the rider using public transit for convenience, cost, and environmental concerns. It also contributes overall to our economic vitality to have transportation. Public transportation is important to recruitment and retention of employees, and it also must grow to meet the challenge of population shifts and increases. I'm going to start off right away with our income for 2011. As you know, this is our year-end report for 2011, and there's four sources of income. The highest is our agency income, and the agency income is basically our 5311 state aid, and also our Medicaid reimbursements. The fare income is the amount of the fares that we get from our ridership. And then the local match, which is 35%, which is the highest category. The local match consists of the city sales tax that we receive, in addition to the taxi subsidy. Also has our county mill in that component, and contracts and fundraising. And then, very, very tiny, at 0% is our interest income off any, well, we really don't have investments, but we've had a couple CDs, and you know, that's not very high, so we really can't even put that interest income down. And what I did here is, similar to last year's, I tried to keep some of this the same. Doug put together the report for me and the numbers for the PowerPoint, and I kept it the same so that you would be familiar with it from last year, and these are the total amount. The total income for the year last year, from January to December, was about $790,910. The next chart, I did keep this similar to last year. I was going to reduce it a little bit, but I think it's good for you to see the overall expenses that we have. And when you look at this, the net, I'll just jump to the bottom, the net income last year is $14,000, $14,000, about $500. Last year, if you refer back to your last year reports, I think it was about $48,000. So we did drop quite a bit last year from our income, but we did need that, those dollars last year, because we were purchasing some vehicles, and we do pay the 20% of our vehicles that we get from the state. And then we also have the new building expenses coming up. You know, our highest expense, just like most businesses, the salaries. You know, salaries and benefits, payroll expenses. The next largest that you see, salaries are about $442,007,000 for the payroll. The next one you see is fuel expense, at $128,000, and that basically is going to be our fuel, maintenance, repairs are in that category. And the other items are fairly low, and I know you have a handout, so I won't go through them. I wanted to give you a breakout of the one-way trips for last year. On this chart, it shows the percentages. The highest one, actually, a little bit higher than medical was work. They're both running at 26%, but medical was just a little bit under work. Last year, we saw a shift. Usually, we had medical reports, or medical trips were our highest, and this year, it's work. Work bypassed it. We're taking more people to work.
Your medical, was that local trips to medical facilities here, or is that?
We do do some to Bismarck, not very, not as much compared to the local, but we do do trips to Bismarck as well. It includes all of them. Yep.
Ms. Radikowski?
Yes.
KDU is Kidney Dialysis Unit, right?
Yes, it is. KDU is the kidney dialysis. We take people from their homes and from the nursing homes for kidney dialysis. Usually, it averages at least three times a week that we take them. This next chart I put in, it's, and I know in your packet as well, was the hospitality research that we did on trips that we do in the community for restaurants, airport, hotels. And I just threw this in, because this is a direct relationship to that chart that you have in your packet as well. That's later on the agenda, and this shows that out of all of our passengers, 20% of our rides are going to airport, hotel, restaurant, and bar. And if, last year, I have my notes from last year, that this is some information that you requested for us to keep track of and to bring to you. The next chart is just public transportation's a viable connection to employment, and that's the kind of the areas that you saw on the graph. Employment, medical, social, shopping for our citizens in our community. The next graph is going to be a comparison from 2010 to 11, and I already shared with you that work has bypassed medical. And last year, when you compare 2010 to 11, we are also up in shopping. So work and shopping increased in 2011 compared to 2010, and medical and social had a little bit of a drop. But overall, they're pretty, they're pretty stable. This is a little bit of the breakout of our ridership. The first graph shows the elderly and disabled rides, passengers, compared to the general public, and compared to some, with the wheelchairs, kidney dialysis, and then the Bismarck trips. And Commissioner Steiner was asking about Bismarck trips, and that's that last category. We did 650 one-way trips back and forth to Bismarck. And as you see, the general public is, has been, has grown. All of them have grown, actually, from compared to 2010 to 2011. Now, this, this graph are trips, and the next graph is very similar, but the difference is this one is trip and passenger count together. We do count a trip, the passengers are going to be higher than a trip, because you can have one trip with three people in it, three passengers, and that's why you see that the passengers are higher than the trip counts. The growth of trips from 2011 to, from 2010 was 6.7%. Passengers grew a little bit over 11%. This is a larger comparison, and what I, what we did here is, this is 2008, '09, '10, and '11. If you recall, the taxi, previous taxi had closed its doors in April. Of 2009 is when we took it over, so I put 2008 before. And then, you can see a nice steady, steady incline is what we have experienced the last three years from that time. And then the percentages are on the bottom, the increases.
Colleen?
Yes.
The first three months of this year, or the first two months, whatever you have statistics on, are you seeing an increase over last year and then already, or?
No, this, this time, we're not. The first couple of months, we don't have March numbers in. January and February numbers are down from the year before. They have gone down. The reason they've gone down, I'm just in the process of putting our grant app together for the DOT, and some of it is it's taken us a little bit longer to get around town, to get, to get to some of the places with the congestion, where we need more manpower to do the trips because of the amount of time it's taking. Also, we've lost, I don't have an exact total, but we've lost some of our elderly and kidney dialysis patients that have been with us and that use us regularly all the week long. That has contributed to some of it. There are some other businesses that have started in town. There's, there's two shuttles that have started, doing some, some airport rides and some rides to the oil sites. There's also additional party bus that has started, and then another, I believe it's called sober bus, has started. So there are some other transits that have started in town. We haven't seen that we're really competing. We're actually giving them the rides we are declining, the rides that we can't take. So Doug has been, Doug, am I missing anything on that as well? If you want to come up, Doug's been working on this.
Kind of just, iterate all that she said is that, you know, we're seeing a little bit of decrease in that, and then also, this winter has been much milder than last winter. So those people that cars wouldn't start, and they don't want to go out in the cold weather into a cold vehicle that called us to ride, weren't doing that this year. So you see a lot of people that are walking or riding their bikes to work this year that you didn't see last year this time. And also, there is a little bit of a trend of people, older people that have been renting, can't afford to rent here anymore, and some of those people are moving out of town, and we're losing the ridership that way as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Doug. That's right, and you probably are aware, some of the people in our community are moving because of the changes that we are experiencing here. Sometimes it's older people that are choosing to move, to sell and move, and sometimes it's the, it's the low-income that just can't live here anymore and afford the rent, or they just can't, can't live and support themselves or their families, and they're moving on. And though, that group, some, the low-income and some of the people that are unable to ride are our passengers. You're familiar, here's a photo of our new facility. And it's at 361 26th Street East is our new home for public transit. Elder Care is housed there as well, and really grateful for the support of the city, your support overall, because of the subsidy and the sales tax, in addition to housing us. I know they really miss us over at Public Works, I heard, since we left. But anyways, we're, we're really excited to be in the new building. It's beautiful, beautiful premise. It's totally awesome to have the vehicles in a garage. It's taking, our fuel bill has dropped significantly, which I expected. We don't have to run those cold vehicles to get them prepped to start work. The vehicles are going to be cleaner, because we can house them inside, so they're going to, they're going to weather much better. The offices are very, very nice for us. Now, we are still working on pending projects. I'm sure Mr. Kessel has kept you informed on the building. There are still some pending projects inside, and of course, outside landscaping is not finished. We still need the sidewalk, the city sidewalk requirement to be put in. And I, my hope would really be to have this done in April, all of it in April, because May 1st is our open house. So we're going to work really hard to get as much as we can accomplished. Once we get all that done and the bills paid, it'll be really nice to, to put this finished project to a closure, because we're really, really happy to be there. Two big highlights of last year is the DTA, the Dakota Transit Association, is held every year. Last year, it was held in Grant Forks, and it's a conference held between North Dakota and South Dakota transit agencies, and I'm really pleased to submit two applications for awards, and we were, and they were, they are granted. Joe Berger, one of our drivers who recently retired, was driver of the year last year for North Dakota, and then Vi Heinley, one of our dispatchers, our part-time dispatchers, was the dispatcher of the year for North Dakota. Really pleased at our staff. We've got an awesome staff. To give you a quick update on vehicles, last year, in 2011, we purchased three new buses and three used. Some of our agencies, other transit agencies in the state had buses to sell when we purchased them, because we needed to increase the fleet. So far this year, I purchased one new minivan, and I have authority, and I just signed a contract today with the state, the DOT. We have two more minibuses we will be purchasing, and I'm requesting for one more bus and minivan for later this year. These vehicles are really needed, because our fleet is aging from use, and this next chart will show you that. This is the, our entire fleet of 13 vehicles. Highest mileage is on the top, all the way to the down, with our newest minivan we just purchased. So as you can see, lot of high, high miles on the current fleet. The lower miles are just the new ones that we've purchased in this past year. And that's why our repairs go up higher as well. Now, if we look into fixed routes, I really would like to get a fixed collateral route going in town. We really, we need, we're going to need some, we probably are going to need more fleet, you know, to handle something like that, because if you're going to do collateral fixed route, you want to have two or three vehicles doing a circular route of some sort, not just one. Sometimes we have staff come on, and there's no vehicle for them if we've got the vehicles, vehicles for repairs. So we're working on that with the state. Wanted to talk a little bit about challenges that we have, and the first one, of course, similar to a lot of businesses in town, is, you know, the competitive salaries. We did do a wage standardization last year and increased the salaries. We had to. We just couldn't, you can't hire a driver for $9 an hour anymore. So we did make some changes to our salaries. A big challenge to hire new staff, of course, and maintain our qualified staff. But I do want to say there's been a shift in the last couple of weeks. We're seeing quite a bit more apps coming in, which is just wonderful. And then also, we do need to watch that staff for employment growth for customer needs in our community. All of our challenges are the increased fuel cost, which is constant. Transit software needs to be replaced in order for us to continue to grow and meet the challenges that we're facing in town. I haven't been happy with this software for four years, but I do have permission from the state. They are funding us for new software. The bids, actually, were due today. The bids are due today, and my hopes are this summer, fall, the latest, that we'll have that new software in place. That's going to be a huge, wonderful efficiency for our office and our staff and the community. Traffic congestion, you know, trips, it's taken all of us longer. We all know that. Taken us longer to get around. Road conditions are poor in places with the beat-up roads. And of course, one of our challenges of riders are not ready when we go to pick them up. We have a five-minute wait time, but that's something that's, we always continue to work on. And our goals, our goals for this year is to continue to identify transportation concerns... And our goals, our goals for this year is to continue to identify transportation concerns and potential solutions. We're looking at medical dialysis transportation, our senior options for transportation, employment needs, and then also our low-income challenges. Our number one is safety, safety of our drivers, vehicles, and customers. Competitive salaries, we continue to always work on that, so we can have a well-qualified staff. Employment growth for customer needs, continued commitment to outstanding customer service. The new software I talked about, financial stability is always on there, and selling and advertising on our vehicles, now that we have them inside. We want to do that. And then the last slide here, purchase new vehicles, go greener, the fixed routes we talked about, partnerships, training and conferences, marketing and public relations, and a logo and website. Doug is working on the logo right now that we're ready to finalize, and he's got a draft Overall, I guess I have a couple more slides. Two more left, actually, and then the rest will go fast. To sustain public transit, we are the only provider Dickinson who accepts North Dakota Medicaid, and also, we provide vehicles with wheelchair accessibility. And we reduce the traffic congestion and alleviate parking demands because we're transporting people. Funding needs to continue, the partnership with the city and the state and federal government, and coming to staff, we want to retain our staff and also attract new. And as always, we invite you to come spend some time with us. Feel free to stop by and visit us, and for sure, come to our open house. Our open house is scheduled May 1st from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the new building. And that completes my presentation, and if there's any comments or questions, we'll entertain that at this time.
Have you given any consideration to running the, you know, converting the vehicles and running them on natural gas?
You know, some small, Doug, any comment? We haven't, they've talked a little bit about that at DOT, but not a lot. Hasn't been a lot of discussion on that. It's something that we, you know, we've been, we hear about here and there, but I have not heard anything as far as DOT's direction on going, on going greener with that.
See, I think, and I could be wrong on this, but I think I just heard the other day on, on the business news that the equivalent cost of natural gas right now is about 50 percent that of gasoline, and since you're pretty much in town, I mean, you don't have to be out over the road looking for refill stations, I think that would be something you could take a really hard look at. You might be able to cut your, your costs after the capital investment, but your operating costs, you might be able to cut those by 50 percent.
Yeah. I'll bring that, DOT is actually coming Thursday, we're getting a compliance review. I'll put that on the agenda to visit with them about that. Thank you.
If they think it's a good idea, tell them it was my idea.
I'll tell them it's yours.
If it isn't such a good idea, tell them it's Mr. Kessel's.
Okay. Can do that.
Any other comments, questions?
Mayor, I guess I just have one comment. With the shift that we made with our hospitality tax funding for the CBB, I know that we have freed up a little bit of money on that side of life. And just looking at the ridership for airport, hotel, restaurant, bar, where we're generating the hospitality dollars, I'd like us to look at a way that we could use some of that funding as we move forward with funding for the transit at all.
I, I think that's good comments. Also, with the changes we've made to how we allocate our, our 20% of our 1%, which is for senior citizens and, and economic development, we can actually put more of that money towards this too, along with hospitality tax. I think, well, I can't remember if this year, if we got away from funding your subsidy with property tax, but we definitely, that's, that was part of the purpose behind these moves, was when it came to the elder care transportation subsidy, that we not have to do that with property tax, that we can do that with our various sales taxes, whether it's the hospitality tax or the 1%.
My understanding is the taxi subsidy and the cities, I was coming through the city sales tax also, and then the sales tax was changed to a stipend amount.
Right.
Is my understanding.
In, in prior years, a portion of your subsidy from the city has come from the general fund, which means it's sale, it's property tax financed, and we'd like, you know, again, we're always looking for ways that we can reduce the, the amount of dependency on, on the property tax. Like I said, I can't remember if this year's budget, you're, you're all allocated against the sales tax monies, or if there's still a little bit in, in property tax.
I don't think so.
But that's, that's not your issue, that's our issue to figure out.
Okay. We, we do need a public transit coordinator. This is like the third year that we're, we still don't have any mid-management for transit, which is, we really do need that position filled, and it needs to have a higher salary. You can't find anybody for small peanuts in management anymore in our community. So I think that's kind of an area that if there was some additional funding, I would really like it to go towards funding a mid-manager, so that we can do a better job. Any other questions?
President Johnson, all those dollars, ours, sales tax dollars, there's no more property tax supporting elder care.
Okay, we, we made that change.
Yeah. And our, our Public Works staff has lost weight since they've left the Public Works building. I'm not sure if there's a correlation there or not. And they do a nice job in their services. Elder care does.
We'll try to get up there to your open house.
That would be great.
I'm anxious to see your new building.
And so the next time that we would look at funding would be when we do our 2013 budget.
That's great.
In July, I believe, right? June and July, do you start?
Yeah, we start the process in July, and then it's concluded in about October.
Okay. So something for us to think about then. Okay.
To get those numbers together, so that when we do the budget, that we have that in mind, too.
Okay. Make a note of that. Thank you.
You have to get by Mrs. Johnson first. Tough.
Well, with that, you know, I just want to thank you once again. We're, we're very appreciative of the partnership. We take our partnerships really seriously. We're grateful for the partnership with the city. I do want to thank the community for using public transit and being patient with us sometimes when we're running behind due to congestion and late rides. And also, I want to thank our staff. We have a phenomenal staff up at public transit and elder care, and I'm really grateful and honored to be working with them. So, thank you.
Well, you provide a valuable service to the community, and as you noted in your opening remarks, there's many in the community who either can't afford to own a vehicle or have either a disability or an age limitation, and so they really rely on, on your services. And I think, you know, Mr. Kessel can speak for himself, but since you've been leading the program with, with your team, we've had very few complaints come into city offices, and we certainly appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next timetable item is public hearings, and these regard, are concern rezoning petitions. And Mr. Catan is out ill this evening, so Mr. Soren, you're going to substitute and introduce these items, I understand?
I will do my best.
All right.
The first item we have is a request from Badlands Properties for a rezon from general industrial to general commercial. The lot is Lot 1, Block 1 of Energy Center First, which is located out on the east I-94 Business Loop, near Butler Machine, Katamis Lee and Jackson's office, and Fisher Industries. The request to, is to switch it from industrial to general commercial for the construction of a hotel is their original proposal. Planning and zoning has reviewed this and is recommending approval to City Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren, for that introduction. At this time, then, we declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
President Johnson, Commissioners, Robert Seavock, Dickinson Fire Chief. The Dickinson Fire Department is not in opposition to the rezoning request, but we do feel it prudent, however, to mention that there are aspects of the fire code that may come into play, especially dealing with the property that would like to be built there, a hotel or a motel. There are distance requirements to certain occupancies that you'll find, and to certain activities that you'll find in a general industrial area, that a hotel or a motel needs to be spaced away, away from. In talking with engineering and planning and with city administration, we felt it prudent to come forward at this time and to make the general statement that zoning alone may not be the only hurdle that, that someone interested in doing this type of thing may run into in that location. And we're more than willing to work with the developers on that project, but as a matter of public record, there are aspects of the adopted city fire code that have distance requirements, that is, isn't, it is the intention of the city fire department to ensure that those requirements are met. And just that comment as a matter of record.
Can you give us an, one or two examples of a typical?
The most prevalent example is one that we wrestle with throughout the community, and that is, in an industrial zone, you'll find hazardous or flammable combustible materials tankers parked next to their, their businesses or in compounds and so on and so forth. The city fire code is very clear that a flammable or a combustible or a hazardous materials tanker must be a minimum of 500 feet away from an occupancy like a hotel or a motel. And it's only fair to the developers that they know that there are aspects of, of distance requirements that may need to be met as they look at developing that property.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Chief Seavock, do you see that affecting the developers of the motel more, or could it affect neighbors?
I believe it could be both. Depending on existing neighbors, and depending on how this may want to be developed and situated on the property, one may affect the other that way. After the, if that is not the case, on the front end, after the structure is built, it will definitely affect what happens in the neighborhood. And this is something that we'll address at the time of the building permit application, of course, but it's also something that we need to look at, is we have other areas of town where this is going to be happening, where general industrial areas, or even light industrial areas, become neighbors to residential areas. There's, there's other aspects of that when that happens, in distance and spacing requirements, depending on what's happening.
Well, I ask that question because we have had a couple of issues before planning and zoning, that we didn't think it was right to do a rezoning that might affect the operation of neighbors who had been there for maybe many years. And this wasn't discussed at planning and zoning, I know when we approved this.
Again, President Johnson, Commissioners, the fire department is not opposed to the rezon, but there may be challenges for the developers that it's only fair that they're aware of. These challenges are, these code requirements are known by engineering and by planning, and we have had discussions even with representatives of the interested parties. So it is not a surprise that these distance requirements exist. And as I stated, we're more than willing to work with whoever it is that wishes to develop the property to ensure the requirements of the fire code as adopted by the city are met.
I think Mr. Jackson has, has raised an interesting question, because if existing neighbors are accustomed to having those types of vehicles on their property, if I under, kind of stand his question and his point, is that if this goes ahead and we allow a hotel or motel to be built there, those existing neighbors may have to alter the way they, the way, or where they park vehicles.
That, or the fact that the existing neighbors and that type of, of activity is already present, would definitely affect how this hotel or motel may be situated on the property to ensure that spacings may be met.
Do you see enough room for both to exist as it currently is, and where the recommendation or the proposed areas for the hotel, do you see everything able to, to coexist?
I know that at, as of right now, at this point in time, there are tankers that are parked within the building that's, within the 500-foot distance of a building that sits on that property now. So there, again, it would be a challenge, I would think, to, to position the building properly to ensure that distances are met, or to build relationships with the neighbors to ensure that business practices are changed so that distances can be met. The distances, in answer, let me answer it this way, Commissioner Olman. If agreements could be made, and if, if the area could be maintained, the distances could
So I think I'm hearing you say that with scrutiny of the building permit application site plan or whatever, you're thinking we can solve the issue?
I believe so. If, from how we see it, how we see the neighborhood at this point in time, I know that there's one area that'll be problematic, depending on how a building would want to be placed on that property.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frinley.
I'm very concerned about changing the use of the land for the people who are already there, who use the proper zoning, et cetera. So I'm kind of of the opinion that perhaps this should be delayed, and the conversation should be had with the developer, so that he sees what, before we do the change, so that he's fully aware of the problem before we do it, not after, when you're trying to figure out how to either build a smaller place or not build it, or either, it seems to be a problem that he should be made aware of beforehand.
You know, since we're in the public hearing phase, I mean, we'll, we'll hear from, why don't we just have one person at the podium at a time? We'll give everybody a chance. No, no. But I mean, we'll hear everybody who wants to speak tonight and, and decide where we go, but are there any other questions or comments for Chief Seavock? Thank you, Chief. All right. Just identify yourself and...
Quentin Kitson. I appreciate what Bob brought up, Mr. Seavock. We did have conversations with the fire department regarding this. We actually hired KLJ to do a survey. We did exceed all the requirements for distance. I think the, the closest one we got was 100 feet away. I think, you know, we had, we've had conversations with all the neighbors about what's going on there, and that I, Mr. Catan's not here, but we had pretty extensive conversation about putting this type of usage by what was happening there. We were able to place the, the building significant distance away from what was required as far as the permitting and zoning requirements are for it. So there was a lot of legwork done for it. You know, I think what the fire department has is issues and that are, are real good concerns. I think we met all those requirements. Developers well aware of what, of what we're up against as far as the distances, buffer zone, whatever, which word you may want to use for that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any questions here or comments?
So you don't feel that the placement of the hotel will impede the daily functions of any of the businesses around there, that what you're wanting to do wouldn't cause you to have to ask them to change their protocol and, and their daily operation to accommodate you?
Well, I think, I think it would be fair to say that what's, they're doing for daily business right now is there would not have to be any accommodation. If they would sell their facility to someone else, they would be under the same type of requirements that that... requirements that that classification, that zoning classification has. So if they changed something or whatever, they would then be in the turn to have to meet the standards of the permitting. So, you know, what, who's there today and how they're doing business, it isn't asking anything from, they can cohabit there, so. Did I answer that question?
Yeah. And so you feel that the project could move forward and that everybody's on the same page and life goes on and...
Well, I'm, for a fact, I know that is, up to today. I mean, I think that's, that's a fact. And, but you're also, you know, I mean, I probably don't have to explain it to you, but if you, if you make that, it doesn't mean that has to be a hotel there either. I mean, you're asking for a zoning change for a general commercial, that could be an office building, et cetera, so you're not limiting it to a hotel structure, if I'm right in saying that. Am I right in that, Mr. Soren?
Yes, it would be a rezoning to general commercial, and if I understand, you know, through some of our conversations, the discussion is the neighboring properties, if they had tankers parked on there, whether it was a hotel or maybe some other office, there might be some spacing requirements that would play, that would not allow them to have maybe the tankers parked in a general industrial zone adjacent to this property being general commercial if, if they didn't accommodate for that through the permit process and get the building set back appropriately.
Right.
But yes, it is not necessarily required to be a hotel, that was just...
Correct.
...what was presented.
But that's your intent right now?
That is the intent of the owner right now, correct.
But they're fully aware that dynamics could change and that a hotel may not be a realistic option and, like you said, that offices or other uses for the land are...
Right. I think the hotel puts the most, has the biggest factor on it, you know, for both the developer and the surrounding. It's the fact that people are going to be staying in there.
And I think our stance is, we just don't want any surprises and we don't want to have not put everything out on the table so that when it comes time to develop, that nobody comes back surprised at...
Right. But we had, you know, we had communication with, you know, personal communication with each individual owner of the properties that are adjacent to that, that could have, you know, could be affected by this, so.
So where's your comfort level as...
Well, I really thought we went through planning and zoning. I mean, we, we had, you know, most of our conversations existed with, two weeks prior to planning and zoning. You know, most people were, I don't want to say excited, but they, they seen a great need for this, they didn't feel it would impact their businesses, businesses at all. You know, I, planning and zoning went well. I don't think we had anybody, you know, have a problem with it or even get up in fact. And we, you know, we had a lot of legwork at the front end, even figure out if we could, because I think the first, their first plan was to rezon a different piece of property that was, probably would have had a bigger impact on the surrounding people, so. I feel, the comfort level was high at the time.
Well, President, and I think that's true. There was, nobody had any concerns whatsoever. I think letters are sent out twice or just once, Sean?
It's advertised twice, letters are sent out once.
Okay.
And not to put words in Mr. Catan's mouth, but I, you know, we did have the discussions and, and I think through his discussions with the developers, he felt comfortable with the zoning as being presented and because there was no comments back about concerns about it from the neighboring properties who were notified, you know, so he did feel comfortable, at least last week, in our discussions, bringing it to the commission for approval tonight. And I know in, in the discussions with Mr. Seavock, there's always that potential and we felt that it was appropriate to get that on record, that, just to make the developer and everyone else aware that when the zoning change comes in an industrial area, there can be things that are looked at outside of just the zoning uses that could impact the development of the property.
But you think it's manageable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment regarding this issue, this proposed Chief, any additional comments?
President Johnson, Commissioners, Engineer Soren summed it up very succinctly. Our intent was to make sure that there are no surprises for the developer. Again, the Dickinson Fire Department is not opposed to the change in zoning, but in visiting with engineering staff, planning staff, and administration, we felt it prudent to make this statement here tonight, make it a matter of public record, that there are issues with spacing that we're cognizant of, and we hope that everything will work out. We, the fire department has not had the privilege of seeing a site plan that shows a potential location and footages and things like that on it, and I'm sure they have done their homework. I know Mr. Kitson does a very thorough job. And again, we wanted to make sure it was on the table and it wasn't a surprise to anybody that there are some issues like that out there. That's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else? Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Coling, do we have an ordinance number?
Mr. President, this will be ordinance 1456.
Any other comments now by city commissioners regarding this issue? Not, would there then be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance 1456?
I move we approve the first reading of 1456, rezoning from general industrial to general commercial.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Harry Dunn will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. I guess, you know, when it comes to second reading though, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable voting for this at second reading if, if I felt confident that the neighbors truly understand what this means, that if the, you know, they, I don't know if the letters specifically mentioned that this could impact, you know, where you park vehicles with hazardous waste and, you know, that kind of thing, if, if some of them do that.
We can certainly discuss it and come up with a method to, to make the neighbors aware of potential impacts to them and...
Right. I mean, they, they may not have been thinking about some of the fire department's setback requirements, and if they truly are comfortable and they know about that, then that would give me more reassurance, I know.
Okay, we can do that.
So another letter to be sent out, or...
There can't be too many neighbors here, really, are there?
There wouldn't be a lot of neighbors that would be directly impacted with that.
So a letter or phone call even?
Could be both. Maybe able to go meet with them even.
Okay, you have a second item then.
The next item is another rezoning request. This one's from Arista Development. It is a rezoning request from Ag to R3, high-density residential. The location is north of 21st Street, approximately a half a mile west of the intersection of 21st and States. It is a, approximately a nine-and-a-half acre tract that they're looking to do a multifamily development, a high-density development on. Planning and zoning has reviewed this and is recommending approval of the rezoning from Ag to R3.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. You've heard his introduction. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? There's no one from the public that would comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed and certainly encourage comments by city commissioners. Mr. Soren, oh, go ahead, yeah, I have a comment or question.
Do you know how many apartments would be proposed for the site?
You know, we have so many in the area, I don't know specifically on, on this one, how many the units were.
I guess, was there any discussion in planning and zoning about that 21st Street corridor, perhaps having more commercial development along that corridor as opposed to residential? Yeah, I think as Exit 59, that area gets developed, and if we have a reliever route that goes north from Exit 59, I, I have a feeling that 21st Street is going to become a very busy street, a very busy corridor, and whether or not, I mean, as we viewed the future, is that being viewed as all pretty much residential along that corridor, or is some land being reserved for...
Currently, I believe the majority of it is looked at as residential. There is in the works proposals to try and save the intersection of State Avenue and 21st with some commercial development around that, that intersection specifically, but I don't believe that the plan is to take a corridor of commercial farther west along 21st.
The preliminary land use plan that we're now working with, I, I would guess that that shows this is all residential then?
I believe that's correct. There's a lot more commercial being discussed and looked at along the 40th Street, a mile north going over to that road, but this is showing a note at the intersection of 21st and, and State Avenue.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frenzel.
I believe all of, or almost all of the owners of the land currently in this central area are almost all working on multifamily residential for their use. South of it, north of this piece, west, west of this piece, it's all proposed, it's all part of the, that land use map.
Yep. You are correct, and that's partly why it's hard for me to answer the question about how many units on this one. I know to the west and north of it, there's several multifamily units. This one has multifamily directly across the road to the south, there's several multifamily, and I believe almost 1,000 units in, in that general area is the overall number that has been discussed at this point.
This is it right here. All of this land, this slash land here, it's all planned as multiple, or multiple, it could have some commercial development in it also, but, but it's primarily residential.
President Johnson and Commissioner, I do know that there's three and a half acres on the, what would be the southwest side of that intersection that has been reserved for commercial as you're discussing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Coling, I'm going to go out on a limb and assume this is ordinance 1457.
You are correct.
All right. So if there's no other discussions, would there be a motion regarding first reading here for 1457?
I move the approval of the request for 1457.
Okay, we have a...
First reading of the ordinance.
We have the first reading motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Further discussion? Harry Dunn then will vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item three, and Mr. Soren will let you continue there.
Actually, Mr. President, the first item is the development agreement, and I have that one that I will present to you.
All right.
In your packet, it says a proposed development agreement between the city and Cook Property Investments. This development agreement covers the land that will be coming up for plating as Cook's Meadow Hills fourth. This development agreement covers annexation of this property to city limits as well as some matters regarding assurance of infrastructure completion. It is the developer's intent to connect this property to municipal services and pursuant to our standard development agreement. The city has generally required developer, developers to execute a development agreement such as this to provide some security for the infrastructure completion. I will note, I did have some conversations with the developers' council, and we did discuss a couple of modifications to the agreement that is in your packet, and these modifications had to do with the developer's intent to phase some of the completion of infrastructure, particularly on paragraph seven of the agreement. We added a clause in there stating that the developer would post security prior to the commencement of construction for each phase of the required infrastructure completion, and also that the city would hold that security until that that phase of the infrastructure was completed. When the developer entered a new phase, then he would post a new security that will cover the costs of completion of the infrastructure for that phase of the development. The developer is in the audience, he can speak to the development agreement as well. I am in agreement with the changes to the development agreement as they have been proposed, but I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Coling, had those changes already been made to this draft then?
It has not been made to the draft that is in your packet. These are changes that the developers' council and I talked about this afternoon, and I am in agreement with the changes that we've discussed, but they are not included in the materials in your packet.
Okay, thank you. You've heard Mr. Coling's introduction. Comments or questions?
So the only difference on A, B, and C is their options, is that instead of funding 100% of the entire project, they'll fund 100% of each phase as they move forward.
That's correct, Commissioner Olman. And the idea, the developer indicated to us that posting security for the entire infrastructure may be cost prohibitive for this development. It's a rather large development and it contains a lot of interior roads and infrastructure, water and sewer connections, so I understand it's the developer's intent to phase some of that development in and complete part of it and post security for part of it as he progresses along with construction.
And can't move to the next phase until the first phase is completed and so forth?
He could move to the next phase, but would have to post a security for that phase, so there's the potential that the developer could have multiple phases going at, at any one time, but would have to post security for whichever phase he proposed to do and was constructing at the time.
So the end result's the same, it's just how you complete it?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? So, Mr. Coling, you'd be asking us to approve this agreement with the changes that you've agreed to with the developers' council?
That's correct. The, that's at your discretion to approve the agreement or not, but as I indicated to developers' council and to you, I have no issue in our quarrel with the changes that they proposed.
But is that a proper wording of the motion?
I think your motion would be to approve the development agreement with the modifications that, that I indicated to you.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And we have the motion and the second. Any discussion, further discussion? Any discussion, further discussion? Haring Dunn will vote on the motion then. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, do you have item B?
I do have the next one, President Johnson. The next item is the final plat for the Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Edition, which is located east of State Avenue and south of 40th Street in the northwest corner of town. Planning and zoning has reviewed this and is recommending approval. There were a couple of questions that were brought up, as I understand them, at the planning and zoning meeting, particularly dealing with the oil well that's on the site and the pipeline that goes through. I believe at planning and zoning, there was a discretion, or a discrepancy with the oil pipeline and the easement that's being provided for it. Since that time, the developer has confirmed the actual location of the pipeline and ensured that the easements are sufficient to cover the location of the pipeline as it was surveyed in, and they've made those modifications to the plat to accommodate that. And the other question that was brought up about the specific site is ensuring that they can, had adequate room to get equipment in and around the oil well for work, and they have provided us a drawing showing how their vehicle could get in and get around the site, making sure that adequate provisions were made for that to happen on that location as well. With that, I believe they've answered the questions that were brought back for us to assure that we're taken care of, and we're recommending approval of the plat.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren, and this is resolution number...
Mr. President, this is my resolution 10-2012.
10-2012, okay. Any questions or comments for the city engineer regarding this plat? Would there be a motion regarding resolution 10-2012?
Need to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Haring Dunn will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. There's an item C there, Mr. Soren.
And the, the next item is the rezoning of Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Edition. It is currently all zoned egg, and it is a rezoning from egg to R1, R2, R3, LC, and CC. The resolution in the packet depicts the lots, I'll run through those quickly, but from egg to R1 is block six, lots three through eight, block eight, lot six through 10, block nine, lot six through 10, block 10, lot six through eight, block 11, lot seven through 14, all of block 12, all of block 13, block 14, lots one through four, and block 14, lot seven through 16. From egg to R2 includes block six, lot nine, block eight, lots one through five, block eight's lot 11 through 14, block nine, lots one through five, and 11 through 15, block 10, one through five and nine through 16, block 11, lots one through six, lot 15, lot 17 through 19. From egg to R3 is block four, lots two, all of block five, block six, lot two, and all of block seven. And from egg to CC is all of block one, all of block three, block four, lot one, and from egg to LC is all of block two, block six, lot one, and I believe that's all of the lots in the subdivision. And planning and zoning's reviewed this, and city staff were recommending approval of the rezoning request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. I assume this is 1458?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, at this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to comment regarding this proposed ordinance may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment?
President Johnson, city commissioners, Mike Mouse appearing on behalf of Klein Production Company. Klein Production Company owns the producing oil well within Cook Meadow Hills Fourth. We have a number of objections to the plat that you just approved, but you didn't have a public hearing on that, but we don't agree with the representations made, that the pipeline is within the easement, that the location is big enough, that the road matters have been addressed and taken care of. And so I would like to pass out the plat drafted by Catamus Lee and Jackson, showing where the pipeline is not within the easement, and the location's not big enough, and the road is not sufficient. This oil well has a workover rig on it once to twice a year. It has a seven axle weight road that's existed for more than 20 years. By public law prescription, that's a public road until it's given up. Hasn't been given up. We haven't been showing any changes. We did address the issues at the zoning commission, we made our concerns known to the developer, but we don't have a new plat showing that the pipeline's within the easement, so we still object to the plat based on these problems. It's not unusual to have oil wells within city limits, Oklahoma City, Los Angeles, and so forth. We need to address some of these problems now, so that when people buy these lots, if there's an oil leak and it's not within that easement, how does, how does Klein Production Company go in and repair the oil leak? You can see by looking at this thing. The pipeline easement was reduced from 50 feet to 40 feet. Cook Hills First, it was 50 feet wide. But if you look just going east on that from the oil well, you can see, when you get over into lot 10 of block 12, pipeline's not even in the easement. You go west, the pipeline goes below the easement, then comes out on top of it. The areas that are planted as lots go right up to the very tube within the area that's now had surfaced, and inside the fence and take away the area for moving around that. We anticipated after we made the objections known, that we would be approached and work these things out, but that hasn't been done. So we object to the plat on various grounds, including that the pipeline's not in the easement, easement's not big enough, the road matter's not been taken care of, the well location's not, is not big enough. And again, if these people buy these lots, build a house, and there's a pipeline leak, Klein Production Company has to have an easement to go in there and repair that pipeline. It has to be within the easement area. They have to have a road that's big enough to turn around a workover rig and allow a workover rig on location with trucks and vehicles outside of the area where those four little circles are, because OSHA doesn't permit any vehicles within that area when there's a workover rig on location. So we object to that. I realize you've already done the plat, I thought there would be a public hearing on it, there wasn't, so on that basis, we object to the zoning until the plat is corrected.
Mr. Coling, a point of interest here, did I make a mistake? Was there supposed to be a public hearing for the plat?
Mr. President, public hearings are required for all ordinances. Approval of a plat is done by resolution, and it's not by itself require a public hearing.
President Johnson, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Soren.
I do know that Catamus Lee and Jackson did do the survey of the pipeline, and it was confirmed that their survey was correct and there were some problems. The new plat does have a 50-foot easement for the pipeline, and it does show the pipeline in the easement, particularly in the lot one and lot 10 of block 12, that the plat that he is showing you shows that it's not in. They did make those corrections as part of the plat that was submitted for tonight. And it was my understanding in talking with the engineer that they provided the new plat to Klein Productions, and as of this morning, hadn't heard anything back from them, and they're in the audience if you'd like to hear from them as well.
What you're saying is the handout that Mr. Mouse gave us is not the latest plat then?
Right. The items that were brought up about the easement width were changed to 50 feet on the plat that was approved. They did survey to make sure the pipeline and verified Catamus Lee and Jackson's survey that they have on here, the pipeline was accurate, and that is indeed in the new easement that is being provided on here, as well as they've made some accommodations around that well site to allow for a vehicle to get around.
And according to that, it also takes into account the workover rig and the four dots that Mr. Mouse talked about, and still be able to drive vehicles around that too. That accommodation was made.
Mr. Mouse, have you seen the new plat?
Have not.
Has your client seen it?
I've not had contact with my client, so I don't know that he got it or didn't get it.
Evening, President Johnson, commissioners. I'm Harvey Schneider with Toman Engineering, and we have been in touch and had several phone conversations with Mr. Klein, and we've made the changes that were discussed at the planning and zoning, and with that, what I'll do is, I'll just pass around a copy of the pipeline as it was changed, and then also the copy of the plat that you approved right here, showing reflecting the same easements, but it's an overhaul.
Is that what I have right here?
Yep.
Okay, just to clear a couple of things up on this, you know, with the way we originally laid out the plat with the oil line easement, we worked with Klein Oil, and we assisted, they replaced the oil line from the well site going east over to 12th Street. That was replaced over the winter months and such, and we worked with Mr. Klein in the placement of that with relative to the location and elevation of it. Once it was all done, we had Mr. Klein's staff locate by flagging or locate the pipeline so we could go out and tie it in, and that's what we did. We prepared the plat from that, we came to the planning and zoning, and then we were presented with the drawing from Mr. Klein that Catamus Lee and Jackson had performed. So we did go out and verify the exact location today, and we do confirm that drawing that was presented, so we did change the location and adjusted the easements according to what they were recommending. We did change the easements from that 40-foot width to the 50-foot, and that matches up to what was done in the Cook Meadow Hills Fourth. Also, another item was the site access to where the oil well is located, and what we're proposing is access to the site off of Wall Street. Wall Street would connect directly to State's Avenue. I guess, just to give you a little location, the exact location of the, of the road that there today is lined red parallel to the south side of the oil well that we indicate the oil line in red, this existing road lies red to the south of that running parallel. So what we're looking at is just to provide a relocation onto that Wall Street with access into the oil well site. One of the concerns originally was the width of the access. We originally had it at 40 feet wide coming off of Wall Street into an approach. What we did is we widened that to 66 to match up with the right-of-way that is red to the north, you can see on the drawing there. So we widened that right-of-way to 66. We also, you can see some sketches in there that we drew some vehicles in there, and what those are is with a 50-foot rig is what we use for the curves, and the radiuses that we're using is a 40-foot radiuses for the trucks to maneuver around the sites and to get around the anchors. You know, also, you know, when this came up right after the meeting, Mr. Cook and myself, we went around to some other well sites within the community that Mr. Klein operates, and this one, you know, I guess looking at some of the other ones, this one, you know, far exceeds the size of any of them. I mean, there's one of them that has a concrete wall around it, and there's one to the south that does not allow for the turnaround around the outside, but we've met all of the requirements that Fred was asking for. Again, all of these drawings were sent via email to Mr. Klein last week, and we put on the email that we'd like a response by mid-afternoon today, prior to us coming out here, and he did not respond to that, so... But really, everything we've shown on here meets what we had talked about after the planning and zoning meeting. We met with Mr. Klein and Mr. Mouse right after the meeting, and we went through the items, and we feel we've addressed, you know, all of the items that were of concern at that point. One point that wasn't brought up was, we were also accommodating the oil line, we're putting a V ditch over the top of it, similar to, excuse me, what we did on the Meadow Hills First Edition, and that's in our grading plan right now, and that's the way it'll be So I think with that, I've, I think everything is pretty much covered. Does the commission have any questions of myself or the owner, Mike Cook? Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mouse?
Mr. President, commissioners, based upon the revised plat, I'm going to withdraw all objections except one, and that is, this Wall Street is going to have to be an extra heavy-duty road. It's not going to be able to be just an ordinary street. Other than that, it does appear that this new plat, which I did not have a copy of, does meet the objections previously raised.
Mr. Soren, would Wall Street be constructed any differently than, say, State's Avenue? I mean, would it have...
It would be, it would be constructed similar to State Avenue, but different than the residential streets. We did have that discussion this morning about the trucks that would need to go in there. We beating Mr. Harvey Schneider and myself, working on ensuring that the trucks can get to the proper location. So up to that intersection, we'd probably have a different typical section than we would from there on in the subdivision.
I'm assuming for, like a workover rig to reach this site, they would, they would come up State's Avenue. Wouldn't that be the logical way that they would get there?
Sure, that's how they would approach that, and how they currently do today.
Anybody else wish to comment? Anybody else? Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and open it up for discussion here amongst Any comments?
It would appear that all the accommodations have been made, the street structure, the allowance for the overrig, the allowance for the pipeline. Every accommodation that's been asked for has been made according to the plans that are submitted?
Yes, that would be, city staff's recommendation is that we've received everything that's been requested and feel comfortable moving forward. been requested and feel comfortable moving forward with the plat and the rezoning.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there a motion regarding first reading of ordinance 1458?
I would make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1458.
And we have the second. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I just want to point something out. You know, the motion's fine. I think everything is fine. But in the spirit of continuing our ongoing discussion about R3, if you look at the colored drawing that was provided to us showing the various zoning, you look at Block 3, right now there are approximately 180 apartment units being built, I think, something like that. Is that right, about 180, I think, on Block 3?
Yes.
And I just want to point out the rest of the green, if you do a simple proportion how much more R3 we could have up there, we don't know that right now. And again, you know, this subdivision has been well thought out, and I think it's fine. But I just point that out so as in the future we talk about R3, we keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
I guess to echo what Mr. Jackson's saying, I guess that's why I brought up with the plat that we approved just a little bit ago of how many apartments are there. What is our magic number on R3? You know, and I know we don't know that, but we're quickly ramping up to a whole lot of R3.
That's the point.
Well, if you discover what the correct number is for R3, maybe you can also find out what the correct number is for motel rooms, too. It's hard to say, isn't it? It's, the real challenge to us is to understand what the true underlying demand from the energy industry actually is, you know? Are they going to bring us another 500 jobs or another 5,000 or, you know, 25,000? I don't think we really know. I can tell you, like, Thursday morning, I met with an equipment salesman out of the state of Michigan, and he said, and it's someone that's come to Dickinson periodically. He said, "I couldn't get a room in Dickinson," and he spent last Wednesday night in Midora. Think about all the motel rooms we've constructed in the last 18 months. And we've had a crew camp open north of town, and motel rooms are still tight. I think apartment housing seems to be tighter today than it was one year ago. So it's, the demand seems to be there, but when it will hit its peak, I don't think any of us know. Maybe Mr. Cook knows since he's building these, but.
President Johnson?
Oh, you know.
I may offer you guys all of the opportunity. We have discussed amongst Planner Corton, Engineer Soren, and myself, and some of the KJ reps doing our comprehensive plan that we would like to put the City Commission together along with KJ and have a special meeting to discuss that very issue of R3 units, when we're going to meet our peak. We did meet with NDSU just last week to discuss population projections and such. We're waiting on the water and sewer modeling, and then we'd like to request that meeting. So, but we want to make sure we're prepared with the proper documentation, because we know you're going to all ask informed questions, so. So expect a meeting request probably at the next Commission meeting for such a special meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Other comments here regarding this item? We did get the motion in the second, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Are you ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. And I think that takes care of the 5:15 timetable agenda. So we'll move to the 5:25, which is to hear a presentation by Mary Massid from Southwest Water. So welcome, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. It's a pleasure to be with you today, as well as your staff. What prompted this presentation, I guess, or come visit with you today is we sent to the city an annual report for ONM for the water treatment plant, for your water treatment plant, to let you know that we're still taking good care of it. So here's the report, and I'm sure Sean's read it thoroughly. Just a few highlights over the last year. We've done some chemical trials over there. We have reduced fluoride levels from 1.2 milligrams per liter to 0.7. That's under State Health Department and EPA. We've been doing a lot of preventative maintenance. I'd also like to let you know that we are currently doing some rehab work at the treatment plant, and that's about $767,000 worth. We are, we've redone the Greenleaf filters, which are gravity filters. We're working on the large lime softening basin, and we, once that gets back up and running, we'll be doing some work on the smaller basin. With that, we've had to operate the treatment plant 24/7 to keep every, all the residents in water. We've had a few issues with that, especially as far as the extra needs with the oil industry, but we've worked together to solve those. And now that the major filters are back in service, our issues are resolved.
So will you continue to operate 24/7 then, or do you go back to a more normal schedule?
Hopefully a more normal schedule once the basins, the large basins rehab is finished, which was supposed to happen last Saturday, probably two weeks from now, I'm guessing. I had to guess. Along with that, I thought I'd let you know, a couple other things with treated water. Our highest month this last year, we treated a little over 8 million gallons, as you know. The treatment plant is 12 million gallons per day capacity. Highest treated water was a little over 8. The most that we pumped out of the treatment plant was a little over 9 million. City's capacity, we've talked about this in the past, is about 6. But with the pumps you have, you're rather limited. Your pumps are in the basement of the treatment plant, and we do take good care of those for you as well. And actually, it's about 3,700 gallons a minute, and to be at the 6 million, you should be at 4167. Which brings me to the fact that part of our plan currently with the pipeline, we're doing a lot of construction. I'd like to update you on that briefly, but as far as the treatment plant and the pumps, we've had discussions in the past with the city that it would be a good idea to build a separate pump station outside the treatment plant. That would get your pumps out of there, that would get our pumps out of there. Your pumps could be sized for current and future needs. Or you could put in, yes, somehow we would do that, or you could use smaller pumps to begin with and add pumps later on. It would give us more room for expansion of the current treatment plant if that's what the state decides to do with your blessing. It would also allow us to treat for taste and odor if and when that becomes an issue again in the future. So I would think sooner rather than later, we would like to do that. I believe we had that in for the 1315 biennium for our construction schedule, but I'm thinking we might want to look at that possibly next year if possible.
So if we, and this might be questioned, Mr. Soren, if we remove our pumps and go to a separate pump building, I'm assuming we would put new pumps in rather than take the old ones and try to move them?
Yeah, I believe we would build the new facility with new pumps and tie into that directly, yes.
So do you have, like, you know, a ballpark cost estimate on what this would be?
You know, I believe the number that was thrown out there was about 3 million, but I'd want to check that to make sure. I don't know if you-
Actually, our current projections now are about 4.335 million.
4.3 million?
Yep. Yes, sir. Excuse me. I see that as a cost share, and that's something we'd probably have to discuss.
Oh, it'd be a cost share between us?
Yes.
I just assumed you'd pay the whole thing.
No.
No?
We're wide open to a 90-10 relationship.
That's kind of you. So we are underway. We are under construction in the Oliver Mercer North Dunn service area. We're currently constructing or finishing up on about $45 million worth of construction projects. We're in the current biennium for funding for 24 million. We're asking or proposing to ask next biennium for 49 million, little 49 and 1/2, to hopefully finish our project if we ever will be finished. And part of that, too, which isn't totally addressed, is the exponential growth in the needs. And we're working together with the city as far as the growth, and we're waiting anxiously, awaiting numbers like you are with population. The other communities and rural areas we serve are seeing growth, but not to the degree that Dickinson is. So those issues need to be addressed. We do have some, I call that redundancy in our system. We're looking at building second reservoirs and things that should help with storage and allow extra capacity. Also, for the region around Dickinson, and I've said this before, so I don't know if I'm being redundant here as well, when Oliver Mercer North Dunn, when the treatment plant comes online, in fact, we're doing test water this week. We're doing filtration water. So it will be soon. The cities up there, Hazen and Stanton, have received their 90-day notice letter. We're anticipating mid-May. But once that comes online and we build our line north to serve Northern Dunn and Northern Golden Valley and Stark Counties, that will free up capacity, which will allow more capacity to the west of Dickinson, and will also serve Dodge Halliday, Dunn Center, Golden Valley. I'm always only hitting on four. The five communities we serve up there will be served out of the new treatment plant, which will free up about 120, 140 gallons a minute to the east, which should help in that direction. We're also doing a study to see what we can do system-wide to increase capacity, whether it be larger pumps, extra pumps, new pump stations, storage reservoirs, whatever. So. I know we're running late, so I could talk for hours, but I won't. That's it, unless you have questions. Anything specific? Oh, annexation, we're dealing with that. That's kind of an issue, but I think we'll get through it. Also, the water depot, I don't know if we want to talk about that. Sean's going, yes, please.
If you could talk about industrial water and the effort the state is undergoing at this time to quantify need?
And it's mostly with our project currently. We have two permits for water. One is for domestic use, which is 17,100 acre-feet of water. The other one is for industrial use, which is 1,130 acre-feet of water. That industrial use permit, we didn't get until 2005 when Red Trail Energy came on. Prior to that, there was no industrial use in our system. About a year and a half ago, we applied for a second industrial use permit of 8,000 acre-feet of water. And now, we thought at the time, there was a lot of blue sky in that number, but I'm not so sure anymore if there really is. So we're looking for input from the city as far as what you see for your future and if you see additional industrial sales within your allotment, shall we call it, your 6 million? And plus, we're going to have to look at those numbers as well and what you see as growth and what you want to do as far as industrial sales.
Okay. So going back to the pumps.
Yes.
If we had to use 6 million gallons, I think I heard you say our pumps can't pump 6 million gallons.
That's correct.
Whereas somewheres between 3 and 4 million?
Yep.
Okay. Then I have, when you said your highest month now was 8 million gallons, when you look back to previous years, what were your highest peaks then? Is 8 million a record?
I think a little over, no. I think about 9.
Okay.
Little over 9 million.
Okay.
Sales of water are very cyclical. It's very related to weather until our recent history with water sales for the oil industry. For instance, the City of Dickinson last year used 805 million gallons, which is a new record for you. And out of that, oh, almost 144 million was for industrial sales.
And, okay, so that was a record year, and then 2011?
For City of Dickinson water use, yes.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Kessel?
The industrial water use is complicated, or maybe even cleared up is a better way of saying it, after we get our treatment plant online, our wastewater treatment plant, because we'll be able to provide between 2 and, I'll defer to Engineer Soren, between 2 and 4 million gallons of treated water per day for industrial purposes or other like purposes. Is that a fair number?
Yeah, it's, you know, obviously, the plant is being designed to handle peak capacities, but whatever we would take in, which on average would be between that 2 and 1/2 probably to 4 million, you know, we'd be able to provide as a reuse source.
And reuse could be for industrial sales. It could also be, for example, we have lots of city parks and other city property, if we wanted to somehow divert that water to be used for watering parks and grass, we could do that, if, I guess, if it's cost justifiable. But, so we're going to have some options available to us on how to use that water other than just to put it back into the Hart River.
We also have, it's worthy of note, we have an agreement in place to provide water to a farmer on a pivot. He's interested in expanding that effort as well.
Do we have any, do you have any concerns that Southwest Water may not be able to deliver enough water to Dickinson and the other communities you serve if we have, say, very significant growth?
No.
Good.
No, I don't. We'll find a way, we'll work together, and we'll make it work.
Okay.
But no, I don't.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
If I could, I have a handout, so you can look at it some other time. I have a progress report for you that talks about the pipeline this last year, some highlights, water rates, our timeline, which shows you the history of the project and the funding, which through the end of last year was over 205 million dollars. And then I have also our funding request sheet for 24 million for this biennium and 49.4 for next biennium. So everyone you talk to that has money, be sure to mention this. Thank you.
So you're asking for your budget essentially to be doubled?
Yes.
And that has a lot to do with just oil impact?
Yes.
Okay.
Our major force, source of funding is Resources Trust fund, currently.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Are you, oh, you're not done?
Yes, the hour is late, and I'm sure you want to have better things to do. Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it. I appreciate your support with our project and being able to provide you quality water.
Well, no, thank you for being here and giving us an update. I think water is something that not only the Commission's concerned about, but I think all of our citizens are, and so to have you come in here and give a report like this is very valuable, and I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well-
Yes, the hour is late, and I'm sure you want to have better things to do. Thanks for inviting me, I appreciate it. I appreciate your support with our project and being able to provide you quality water.
Well, no, thank you for being here and giving us an update. I think water is something that not only the commission's concerned about, but I think all of our citizens are, and so to have you come in here and give a report like this, very valuable, and I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a 535, and that's a public hearing regarding policy changes related to park dedication and new plats. We did, I think, discuss this at previous meetings. Mr. Kohl, can you introduce this before we open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners, the proposed ordinance before you make some changes to the city's ordinance regarding the dedication of land for parks and recreational spaces, as you mentioned, the commission did approve first reading of this ordinance already. There have been two major changes to this proposed ordinance from first reading till now, so this matter is not for public hearing, and we are not requesting commission action on it at this point. But the two changes, major changes to this ordinance are that developers of new residential plats will be required to convey at least 7% of their land for parks and recreational spaces. That is up from 5% in existing ordinance. Also, consistent with our current ordinance, it does provide that developers who do not reach an agreement with the park district regarding the land to be conveyed, may pay a cash and lieu payment, and that cash and lieu payment is set by the Board of City Commissioners and incorporated into your annual city fee schedule. The other major change that's made in this ordinance is to provide for an off-site assessment for commercial and industrial properties. Parties, developers that were plating commercial or industrial properties would pay an off-site assessment that also would be set in the city's annual fee schedule and incorporated by resolution, by your decision. That covers, I think, the majority of changes that are made in this ordinance. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this ordinance may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, and as Mr. Kohl said, if you have comments or questions for him, go ahead and ask them now, or state your comments.
President Johnson, Commissioners, I just wanted to mention that I did speak with James Kramer, Park and Rec Director, about the changes that were in the ordinance, and he expressed his satisfaction with those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Anybody else? All right, this will go on the next meeting's agenda for second reading then, and again, the public will still have an opportunity to comment at that time if they would like. That completes the timetable agenda, and we'll go down to Tab 5, Public Safety, and Chief Seabuck has a report from the fire department.
President Johnson, Commissioners, as stated in the letter that I've included for you tonight, we've been made aware of a possible grant opportunity through workforce safety and insurance, what they call the agronomics initiative issue program, that we may be able to access to help us purchase some needed equipment for the Dickinson Fire Department. It's a process that we have to go through. We have to prove the need through this process to workforce safety. It's not just a matter of making an application and the money's being there. We have to specify exactly what type of equipment we want, how it impacts our department versus the equipment that we don't have, or versus hand-powered equipment that we have at this time. What we're looking at is hydraulic-powered equipment, that they're cutting tools, they're lifting tools, they're spreading tools, they're tools that aren't uncommon to vehicle extrication, but they're also usable across the wide spectrum of the type of responses that we're finding ourselves faced with as Dickinson grows. They're usable for forcible entry on commercial and industrial buildings. They're usable for lifting and cutting in the case of building and structural collapse. And at this present time, we don't have anything but hand tools. So at this time, what I'd be asking for is your consideration for us to proceed with the process. Also, the grant is a three-to-one match, so the most grant money is available to us, depending on price of equipment, would be $20,000. And then, of course, if we had that dollar, the grant amount maximized, that would mean that $20,000 plus about $6,000 or $7,000 on the city's end. I'm not sure where 25% of that actually comes out. Of course, our goal would be to find the equipment that we need at the most reasonable cost, not necessarily, not to max out the grant, but to get the best purchase of our money that we could. Also, the grant requires that the city purchase the equipment first, and then it's reimbursed to the city. So at this point in time, I'd like your consideration of us pursuing this to see if this money is available for us.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Kohl, do we actually need a motion to allow him to pursue this grant?
Mr. President, I believe a motion would be in order.
Okay. Well, I certainly don't have any objections to this, and if you were successful, I think we certainly could find the money to make our matching portion, but-
Thank you.
What do the rest of you think?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Frenzel?
I'll move that we approve the grant request, and we pay our share that's required by the grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any other discussion? Harry Nunn will vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So if you're successful, you bring that to us, and then we'll figure out where we'll direct Mrs. Johnson to take the money from, so.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to Tab 6, Public Works, and I think, Mr. Soren, you have a couple of items there.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson, City Commission. I do have a couple of agreements with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway. The first one is for a water main to go within their right-of-way between 8th Avenue West and 9th Avenue West. Currently, we have water mains that run down 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue and dead end on the end. This will allow us to loop those lines and deal with the circulation of water in that area. The agreement is a 25-year agreement with Burlington Northern, and the cost for this is $16,335. We're asking the commission to approve that agreement, so we can get that project completed this summer as part of our Phase 2 water replacement program.
Is it typical that we have to pay this kind of money for-
For the use of railways? Yes, it is.
For when we do this with other property owners other than the railroad, is it typical, is this what we pay?
Other property owners, generally, we have easements through them, and I don't know that we've ever had, since I've been here, a cost associated with those. Generally, they're given to us through plating or development of the property.
But with the railroad, they have us pay?
With the railroad, it's generally always a payment. When we were leasing for our tank storage, we had annual payments there, close to $2,000 a year.
I can understand when we're using the surface, you know, but-
And I do think we have other crossings that we have had to make payments on, too.
We really don't have any choice, do we?
The other option is try and work with some of the property owners there and see if we can go through their yards, but I think this is the appropriate place to go. We run into problems getting water mains beside houses in narrow lots, so.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Soren, it would be, we'd also be better advised to participate in their railroad protective policy also. So wouldn't you be looking for approval of $16,335 plus the additional $1,000 for the railroad protective states down here in Item 2?
If we elect to go with their policy, you know, I guess I would defer that to maybe Mr. Kohl or someone, as to whether we'd be more appropriate doing that, but it's probably cheaper for us to go with their policy than for us to get our own policy.
We could pass the motion to approve the agreement with a payment up to $17,335, and then that would give the staff the latitude to check things further and make a decision if to include the insurance or not. Is that a reasonable way to go?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Okay. We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Harry Nunn will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You have a second item here also.
The next one is for actual crossing the railroad. At approximately 1st Avenue West, it would be going south across the railroad tracks, and the cost of this one's $8,130. There again would be $1,000 on top of that if we wanted that to be part of their insurance as well. This one is allowing us to potentially, currently, we have a crossing under the underpass that is broken and has been shut off. This one would be fixing that looping system that we have there and keeping us out of the underpass, so we don't have any concerns about future development or improvements to the underpass, causing us problems with the water main. And so we're asking the commission to approve this one as well.
Okay. This could be a similar motion, where you approve the agreement with a payment of up to $9,130, gives them the same insurance latitude. Anybody care to move that motion?
So move.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
This pipeline, I understand, would go right through the northwest corner of the TMI building?
Not quite that far.
It's pretty close, though, isn't it?
Pretty close.
Did we try to charge you something to go by our building, or?
You haven't yet.
We haven't yet. Oh, okay. Well, let's go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything else, Mr. Soren?
The only thing at this point that I would add, I don't have any reports on here, but I have recently met with Apex on the development of the wastewater treatment facility. I do believe that either the next meeting, probably the next meeting, they'll be looking to come with final sets of plans to get the advertisement started for the bidding of that project, to get that thing underway, too. So just, it is moving forward, and when we met, we were at probably a little over 90% completion of plans, so.
Very good. Anything else?
Not for me.
Any comments or questions for Public Works Director Soren? All right, any, we'll go to seven. Any items by city commissioners? Not? We'll go to Item 8. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Mr. Seabuck?
I promise it's the last time. I know this was mentioned at the last city commission meeting, but again, we want to mention that the spring cleanup committee will be having an organizational meeting Tuesday, April 10th, at 4:00 p.m., right here at City Hall in this room. And it's interesting to note that we are already receiving calls from individuals and from groups that are recognizing the need in the community and that are asking us what they can do, and I'm sure that that got started with Commissioner Jack, Commissioner Jackson's comments at the last commission meeting. We appreciate that. We're looking for very strong involvement from the community this year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seabuck. Anybody else from the public?
Chief, one question. In light of all the rain we had this morning, the ban hasn't been lifted.
Obviously, it rained more at your house. No, sir, it hasn't been lifted.
The ban still applies to, and I had a couple of calls on this this week, in the outdoor fire pits.
Yes. When the fire danger index is in the high, extreme, or red flag category, even within city limits, it's just too much of a tinderbox to even consider the fireplaces and fire pits.
Must have rained pretty hard at your house. I see it washed away your mustache.
After 37 years.
37 years. Okay. Anybody else from the public?
One final comment. I drove by the recycle spot on 10th Avenue, and I saw some tree branches. And with spring cleanup, just a reminder that there is not a spot for branches and tree limbs at the recycle spots. If you're caught dumping there, it's a, how much, a $500 fine? $500 fine. So bear that in mind as we go through all the spring cleanup, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Altman. Anybody else? Last chance.